The Métis Nation, we give gratitude and honour to the ancestors, elders, and all Inishinnabe and Métis people for sharing their resources and knowledge. Councillors, any disclosure of pecuniary interest if so state the general nature thereof? Councillor Morrison?
Do you have a conflict of interest for in-camera session? AR-25? 0960.
Thank you, councillor. That's noted. There are no delegations, there are no presentations. We go to correspondence, item 6. 6.1, we have correspondence from the Rainy River District. We have correspondence from the Rainy River District Municipal Association. And I'll go to councillor Bean to see if he wants to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the letter itself, correspondence, is pretty self-explanatory. I certainly encourage all of Fort Francis council to attend if they can. It's always an interesting day and a lot of things are done. Guest speakers will include the Northwestern Health Unit, the Municipal Affairs and Housing, District Rainy River Services Board, the Rainy River District Ontario Health Team, MD Northern Development and Mines in Fednor, RFDC, the Township of Sunniero's Nestor Falls that talk about economic development in a small community. And then there's one open speaker still to go. It's from 9:00 to about 4:30. It's at the Nestor Falls Community Hall. We kept the delegate fee the same at $45. And as you saw, I am Chair of the Resolutions Committee, so any resolution that may come forth for consideration, we ask it to be done before December, I think it's 12th, so that we can have it in the agenda package. Otherwise, there will be some resolutions from the floor if needed. But certainly, anyone can come and approach me, or Peggy, or any of the other ones. And anyway, so again, I certainly encourage all of Fort Francis council to attend if they can. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Bean. Item 6.2 deals with a letter that we received from North Air Taxi Services. Just a comment on this. A similar letter has appeared before council in the past. This one contained new information. So before I put an oral resolution on the floor, did any councillors want to speak to this? Yes, councillor Firth?
After making a few calls, oh sorry, through your worship, after making a few calls in the industry today, I just realized that according to the document here, it is correct that they're not all playing by the same rules. I just want to make sure that when we review this in information that we make sure that there's parity amongst the three providers in the community. I think that's only fair and I believe that we have a say. So I believe that we need to make that say and make sure that it helps in a way that grows for the provision of the community. Thank you.
Yep, I agree 100%, councillor Firth. And so with that, I'll put an oral resolution on the floor that council direct administration should provide a report in quarter one of 2026 on taxi rates and a review of industry issues. Could I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Councillor Firth and councillor Burnett. Any further discussion? All in favour? It's carried. No one was opposed? Okay, item 7, reports. I ask councillor to bear with me. I have a fair number of issues I'd just like to mention fairly briefly. As always, my report is written. However, I'll start off with a report on something that I attended that's not included in the written report. And that's because I have to get the written report in on Thursday to get it on the agenda and this event occurred on Friday. But it was very important and I wanted to mention this. So it was my great, great pleasure to attend the first annual lighting of our new Christmas tree in Rainy Lake Square. And what a wonderful evening it was for those who attended. We started the evening with caroling in front of the museum. Diane Maxi and her choral ears were there and sang their hearts out. And again, it was a group effort. We had a number of our residents congregated around singing along. Better or for worse, I joined the choir and sang with them, but I sang quietly. And then after that, we moved over to the square to have the opening. The opening was well emceed by the Kridlin sisters. The Kridlin family is involved in so many things in our community and I really want to give a shout out to them for all of the community events that they attend and sponsor. As well, the entire evening was put on by the BIA and the Chamber of Commerce. And we had two members of those organisations working very, very hard to get this event done. Heather Johnson and Rhonda Howell. So a very, very large shout out to them. In the opening, Chief Brir of Koochaching was invited and gave a really heartwarming speech, just off the cuff, about the relationship between Koochaching and Fort Francis and the season and the meaning that the season means to him and to all of us. So a big thank you to Chief Brir. And then we had more music, some really good music. I want to make sure I try and get all the names here. Jennifer Thorpe and Sonaya Morrison sang a beautiful duet. And then Brittany Hayes and Ken Keller also sang another beautiful duet. And then we had the ever-popular ladies' hand drummers from Koochaching. There were too many activities to name, but just to mention some of them. We had the Zamboni Boys there. And we're not allowed to call it the Zamboni anymore because they got a cease and desist letter from Zamboni. They had a new name for it. So I'll be referring to it as the Non-Zamboni from now on. But there was hot cocoa and coffee and smores. There was a photo booth. There was street hockey. The street was closed off. Megan Spooner donated a gingerbread house, so there was a draw for that. Santa was there. And the highlight of the evening, of course, was the lighting of the tree. We had our little mini queen and our little mini king come up on stage and count it down. And they counted down from 10 and then the tree was lit and it is beautiful. You could tell that there was a collective gasp from the residents there. All in all, it just was a wonderful way to kick off the Christmas season. And I'm making a prediction right now that next year, you're going to see that place packed even more when word of mouth gets around about what a great evening it was. I do want to also thank Samantha Gosh and his crew of Corey, Clinton and John for putting up the tree. Thanks very much for doing that. And thanks for all of the volunteers and individuals and organisations. There's many, many more who took part and who really created a fine community evening for Fort Francis. It was like one of those stories out of Hallmark cards. Some other things I want to mention. Our Fine Line Art Gallery in Fort Francis celebrated its 30th anniversary. Again, for those of you who haven't had a chance to go there, I encourage you to go there. The local talent on display is absolutely amazing. I was really impressed to see the number of people who attended and who were buying local art. Councillor McTaggart and his wife were there. Again, that was a really good event. We had a town hall meeting here with intervistas. Again, another really important event. They gave their preliminary report on the feasibility of having an airport in Fort Francis. And in a nutshell, the preliminary results indicate that air service is feasible for Fort Francis and the region. A draft report is going to be out before Christmas with a final report coming out in the new year. So hopefully, we'll see some good things develop there. Our erstwhile Member of Provincial Parliament, Minister Rickford, was in town and made three announcements. Gave us money from the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund for our museum, $500,000 to get an HVAC system, which was much needed. Money for improvements at the marina and money for improvements in the East End Hall. Some good news from our Member of Parliament, Marcus Flawski. They have hired someone to reopen the constituency office in Fort Francis. Security checks are being done right now and so that office should open pretty soon. Another heartfelt thanks goes out to the Fort Francis Legion for the wonderful service that they put on for Remembrance Day at the Senotaph. As always, it was a very moving service with the Legion colour guard escorted by the Fort Francis Highlanders. The music was very stirring. I laid a wreath on behalf of the Town of Fort Francis. Councillor McTaggart was there and laid a wreath on behalf of the province. And all in attendance were invited after this ceremony to the Legion for some light refreshments. A very important event in our community. The Salvation Army has kicked off their Christmas kettle fundraiser. This is one of the primary fundraisers for the Salvation Army. So I encourage those who are able to give generously, if possible. You'll be seeing kettles at the place. They're already up at Walmart, at Safeway. Councillor Firth is arranging volunteers to man the kettles. So if any of you have a couple of hours to spare, see councillor Firth. He will eagerly sign you up for a time slot. I can't say enough about the Salvation Army, how much they do for our community, especially this time of year, but they do it all year round. They feed the hungry. They help them find jobs. They help them find places to stay. They provide counselling. So do give generously if you're able to. Another highlight in our community is the opening of the new Studio 6 Extended Stay Hotel. I was privileged to be there for the groundbreaking ceremony and then again for the grand opening. It was, again, very well attended by the public. It's really well done. I particularly enjoy the fact that they have a hockey room for all of the hockey players who come into town. Chris Henderson stood in for Chief Henderson to make some remarks. We also had remarks by Jackie Cohen, who is the daughter of Ben Cohen, who couldn't make it. Heather Johnson made some remarks on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and I made some remarks on behalf of the town. I do want to mention that I had a delightful lunch meeting with Andrew Flynn, who's in our audience tonight, and I introduced around who's the new manager of the Fort Francis Times. I was really pleased with his ideas for increasing the circulation and increasing the coverage of local events and also Indigenous events. I think that we are very, very fortunate to have a newspaper in our community with so many other places losing their newspapers. So a big welcome to Andrew Flynn and welcome to Fort Francis, Andrew. And then the last thing that I'll just comment on this evening is I attended a strat planning meeting with Confederation College. Again, I really appreciate what Confederation College does for our community. They're very receptive to the needs in terms of training and education for our community and are always asking what programs they should offer, what could they do better. So there was a very good turnout to give input into their strategic plan and that strat plan will be coming out in the new year. And that's the end of my report. If any councillors are interested in more detail, you can see me privately. And councillor Mackie does not have a report. Councillor Firth, I believe you had a report?
Thank you, your worship. Just a few things that I wanted to give a little attention to. First, I'd like to offer congratulations to a former resident of Fort Francis, Duncan Keith, on being inducted into the Hockey Hall of Fame and to comment about his speech, that it showed great class as he honoured his roots to Fort Francis not once but twice on where he truly fell in love with the game. So congratulations, Mr. Keith. I also would like to congratulate the folks over at LoSo Food and Coffee Shop for opening since the last meeting. I wish you great success and many prosperous years ahead. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we are progressing with our dog park meetings and they're progressing on pace. Thank you all.
Thank you, councillor Firth. Councillor McTaggart, did you have a report?
Thank you, your worship. Just very briefly, I want to report that on November the 12th, I attended a hiring panel with the OPP in Thunder Bay for the position of the new detachment commander. And an announcement will be coming shortly on the successful candidate. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McTaggart. And with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have three items this evening. 8.2, our regular council meeting minutes. The recommendation reads that council approved the regular council meeting minutes of November 10th, 2025, as presented. 8.3 deals with boards and committee meeting minutes. We have one recommendation reads that the following boards and committee meeting minutes we received as information, the downtown BIA minutes of October 8th, 2025. And 8.4 deals with our youth councillor policy. There's a couple of revisions, actually taking out a couple of things. Recommendation reads that council approved the revisions of the youth councillor policy and that the revised youth councillor policy be adopted through by bylaw this same meeting of council. Councillors, would you like to pull any of those? Seeing none, I have a resolution that reads, "The council approved the consent agenda as follows: Agenda items 8.2, 8.3 and 8.4." Could I get a mover and seconder, please? Councillor Morrison and councillor Mackie. Any discussion? All in favour? It was carried. No one was opposed. Moving on to number nine. These deal with administration and finance division reports. 9.1 is a draft reconciliation policy. Resolution that I'll put on the floor reads that council authorizes the interim use of the draft reconciliation policy, wherever practical, for the purposes of guiding reconciliatory efforts and that council supports the Indigenous Relations Advisory Committee in seeking further consultation in finalizing the draft reconciliation policy and that upon receiving the endorsed and final draft of the reconciliation policy from the Indigenous Relations Advisory Committee, the policy be brought forward for consideration of adoption. Could I get a mover and seconder, please? Councillor Bean and councillor Mackie. Any discussion on this? Councillor McTaggart?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to the committee for the good work. It's an all-encompassing document. It refers through the document many times about the Indigenous portion of the south end of Treaty III. And certainly, those are the bands and communities that are certainly the closest to us. But I'm almost wondering if we're not excluding others that are not from that, those particular communities, by not being more encompassing. There are people, First Nations individuals in the community who are not associated with any of the local bands. And I just think it needs to be maybe a little more far-reaching.
Thank you for that. And council is going to have an opportunity to give their feedback, so that would be a good one. The intent of using that is simply because we wanted to get as much local input as we could. We felt that we would capture Indigenous folks who are not members of the southern end of Treaty III bands when we do the community consultation. But your point is the good one, councillor McTaggart. And so please make sure to input that when we ask for input from council. And councillor Burnett, what's sorry, councillor McTaggart?
Do we have a date on when that consultation is going to happen?
I can't give you one right now unless the clerk can say anything further.
Through the chair, we have begun sending it out. We started with senior management. We're going to be creating a public survey soon. And then we will be looking into further consultation, especially with the First Nation communities coming quarter one.
We did want to get this interim policy before council and in the resolution, get your blessing for seeking further consultation. So that'll happen as soon as this is passed. Councillor Burnett?
Thank you, your worship. This feels a bit unusual to me in terms of presenting something or asking for the ability to implement a policy when it's not yet finalized. I feel a bit concerned that if we don't have it right and we start using it, I'm concerned there may be some repercussions, particularly because we haven't completed the consultation process. So I would prefer to hold off on any implementation until all of the consultations complete and we have a finalized draft.
Yeah, it's a valid point that you make. I'll just give you the reasoning that the committee had in bringing this forward. We've been working on this policy for a number of months now and we indicated to the community that the Town of Fort Francis supports reconciliation. And we wanted to make some concrete efforts. So the material that's in the policy is unanimously being presented by the Indigenous Advisory Committee. And they felt that some of these things, none of them are controversial. We could start to implement now, even though the committee is not complete. But again, it's totally up to council whether they want to give the committee permission to start implementing some of these. Further discussion? Councillor Mackie?
Thank you, your worship. So my question then would be, should we decide to hold off until it was done? How long is that going to be?
Again, I can't answer that. I'll look to the clerk to see if she has any idea of how long that might take. Pretty hard to answer.
Yep, through the chair, we don't really have a timeline at the moment. If I were to throw out a guess, I would probably aim for quarter two to quarter three. We want to make sure it's in before the next term of council.
Yeah, that was our goal, that we wanted to get this completed before the next term of council. But if we can get it done sooner, we certainly will. Again, which is why we wanted to have permission to start implementing some of the issues in there. Any, councillor Morrison?
To your worship, councillor Burnett has some really good points there which I never really thought of because how do we pick and choose which points we're going to bring forward before the consultation?
Well, the idea is that everything in there could be, we could start implementing. That's what we're looking for, permission to do. Yes, councillor Bean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you in responding to councillor Burnett's thoughts and concerns and input, I might suggest that as an amendment, we could strike the first paragraph and just say that we support the committee in seeking further consultation and that upon receiving it, we will endorse the final policy. If there is a concern that we shouldn't be implementing it before it's got the feedback, then my suggestion would be to take out the first paragraph and just paragraph two and three would be the recommendation.
Would you like to make that an amendment?
I could make that an amendment, sure.
Okay, so you'll move that amendment? Can I get a second on that amendment, councillor Morrison? So the amendment then is that the resolution that you have in front of you, the first line will be struck and the resolution will read and that council supports the Indigenous Relations Advisory Committee in seeking further consultation and finalizing the draft reconciliation policy and that upon receiving the endorsed and final draft of the reconciliation policy from the Indigenous Advisory Committee, the policy be brought forward for consideration of adoption. Any further discussion on that? Councillor Bean?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I would just suggest that the first "and" not be included. Just say "that", council. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, councillor Mackie?
Thank you, your worship. My thought would be, if we go ahead with this amended motion, that that doesn't preclude administration from working, utilizing what we are looking to eventually accomplish. They can still start living by that without it actually being written hard and fast.
Using it for guidance, so to speak.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Calling the question on the amendment. All in favour of the amendment? That's carried. No one was opposed. And so then, on the main motion, which now becomes what you have in front of you with the "and" struck from the second sentence and the first sentence completely struck, that's already been moved and seconded if the movers and seconders are still okay with that. They are. Any discussion on the main motion? Calling the question on the main motion, all in favour? And the main motion carries. And thank you very much, as always, for your discussion, councillors. Okay, moving on to 9.1, which is external audit services. Recommendation that I'll put on the floor reads that council agree with the recommendation of administration to appoint MNP LLP as auditors for the fiscal years 2025 to 2029. And further, that a bylaw be presented at the next meeting of council for the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement. Mover and seconder, please? Councillor Morrison, councillor McTaggart? Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favour? It's carried and no one was opposed. Moving on to 9.3. Resolution I'll put on the floor is that council adopt the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada's 94 Calls to Action as they relate to municipal government. Could I get a mover and seconder, please? Councillor Bean, councillor Morrison? Discussion on this one, councillors? Councillor Burnett?
I'm very happy to see this come forward. I do appreciate the highlighted sections that apply to municipal government. I did take the opportunity to look at the 94 points, but you know, so much of it is related to different things that don't really impact municipalities. So I'm glad to see we're moving on this and I look forward to seeing more come forward in the future.
Thank you, councillor Burnett, for the comments. I'll just add one comment. This is courtesy of councillor Morrison, who had a very good suggestion, which was that there are little booklets on the 94 Calls to Action. And for people who don't have access to a computer or not necessarily computer literate, we've spoken to the Fort Francis Library Board and they've agreed to get some of these booklets and stock them in the library so people can access them at the library. I don't know if they still have any at the museum. Okay, so the library will have them. And so with that, I'll call the question. All in favour? That's carried and no one was opposed. Okay, moving on to Community Service Division reports. Agenda item 10. Clerk points out to me that I missed a very important one from item nine, which are user fees. My apologies. Backing up to 9.4, which is the 2026 user fee schedule. How could I miss that one? The resolution that I'll put on the floor is that council approve report AR-25-0953, being the 2026 schedule of fees. And further, that a bylaw be brought forward to the next meeting of council so that most fees can be implemented on January 1st, 2026. Could I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Councillor Burnett? Councillor Morrison? Discussion, councillors? Councillor Burnett?
Thank you, your worship. Could you tell me what the difference is between a slip rental and a personal watercraft slip rental?
Manager MacLeod.
Thank you, through the chair. It's for seadews. Like, it would be more like a personal, yeah. There's like the normal boat slip rental and then there's the personal watercraft, which would be like a seadoo.
Okay, follow up, yeah.
So I'm just wondering why then, for the personal watercraft slip rental is going from 350 to 400, which is actually like a 14.3% increase? Why such a big increase just for that particular line?
Manager MacLeod.
Thank you, through the chair. It was just to bring it up a bit more to the $700 level. They do have, it is a locked, you know, it's behind the locked docking station and they, the, sorry, the locked dock. And they do get the benefits of the $700 price as well and just like that security. So we were just bringing it up to kind of match a bit better.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, I will then call the question. All in favour? That's carried and I don't see anyone opposed. That's carried, and I don't see anyone opposed. Now we move to item 10, Community Service Division Reports. Finally, after a lengthy period of development, the public art policy appears. And so I'll put this resolution on the floor. The council approved the public art policy as presented, and that council direct administration to establish a public art committee in accordance with the committee bylaw. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please? Counsel Firth? Counsel McTaggart? Questions or comments, councilors? Counsel McTaggart?
Thank you, worship, through you. I know that the committee structure is listed, but I'm wondering if there could be an additional seat from the MAT committee? I know the MAT committee has some funding available and has participated in some public art funding already, and it may be a good addition.
That's a good point. Would you like to make an amendment to add that to the committee structure?
I would, indeed.
Okay, so Counsel McTaggart is putting forward an amendment that we add the MAT committee to the committee structure. Are you moving that, Counsel McTaggart?
I am.
And a seconder on that? Counsel Firth? Any discussion on the amendment? So calling the question on the amendment, that the MAT committee be added to the committee structure, all in favor? That's carried, no one was opposed. So the main motion now is the policy in front of you with the MAT committee added to the committee structure. Counsel McTaggart and Firth, you were the original movers and seconders, still good? Any further discussion on the main motion? Oh, Counsel Bernetta?
Sorry, I lost my notes for a moment, and I found them now. I do have a question about existing public art. I know we have a few murals on different buildings in the community, and I'm just wondering who's responsible to maintain those, particularly, I know the one on the building where the NCDs is. It looks like it needs some maintenance, so I'm just wondering who's responsible to do that.
Does our museum curator want to take this, or does Manager McLeod want to take it?
Thank you, through the chair. As far as I know, that is owned by the property owner, and there are discussions about them taking care of that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I do have several questions.
Sure.
Okay. Item 2A, it says, reviewing and endorsing of the public art policy, ensuring that indigenous art and artists are adequately representative. So I'm not sure what endorsing means, or how the committee will ensure that indigenous art and artists are adequately represented. So that's 2A in the policy. You don't see it? Sorry.
Manager McLeod?
Thank you, through the chair. Is that under the purpose?
21A, is it? No, sorry.
Under responsibility.
Oh, yeah.
Page four.
Sorry, it's 42A. So it says, the Town Indigenous Relations Advisory Committee is responsible for the reviewing and endorsing of the public art policy, ensuring that indigenous art and artists are adequately represented. So I'm just trying to operationalize that in my mind, like how they would do that.
Good question. Any thoughts? We don't mean to put you on the spot, I mean...
Sorry, I should have sent you these yesterday.
It's okay. I would, I think that the basic would be after we, or, well, we've taken it to the Indigenous Relations Advisory Committee to see that their comments.
So maybe endorsing is not the correct term. It's maybe reviewing and providing input regarding the public arts policy? I just felt like endorsing was almost like approving, where that's actually council's responsibility, so I don't know if it's a huge...
Are you okay with changing endorsing to reviewing?
Or to reviewing and providing input instead of endorsing?
Yes. We can definitely do that.
You're fine with that?
Moving on to item 5B, so I'm hoping I've got this numbering right here. Right, so it's actually under the same responsibility section. So 5B is the municipal clerk is responsible for, and B is providing a form of explanation of any declined projects. And I really would hate to put her in that position when it's actually council perhaps who would decline an art project. So I'm just wondering if it should say relaying the decision of the committee to those projects that are declined.
Yeah, that's a good catch, because that's exactly what the clerk does. Council makes the decision and then the clerk relays.
Yeah.
Are you okay with changing that? These are just little friendly amendments. I'm not going to formalize it, we'll just make the change.
Okay, just two more.
Yeah, keep going, no problem.
Okay, 11.3. Just scroll down there. Okay, now I'm not sure what section that was. Shoot, I think it's seven. It's all donations of art, so... Nine. So it's on accessioning or deaccessioning of public art? So item number three says, all donations of art must be reviewed and approved by the public art committee. Would this not require council approval as well? I wasn't sure if this went beyond the committee to council.
That's a good point. Ultimately, council approves everything.
I think this is page 11 of 12, or eight of nine. I don't know, I have two numbering systems.
Counsel McTaggart, I was just gonna, did you want to weigh in on this particular one?
On that particular one, I do, because the museum does accept accessioning and deaccessioning of artifacts all the time, and I think this is sort of falls maybe in line with what the museum is already presently doing.
That makes sense. Are you okay with that, Counsel Bernetta?
It does make sense, and it also addressed my next question, so I'll just skip that. So I think...
Thank you, Counsel McTaggart.
...all my questions. Oh, one more thing. Those existing art projects that I talked about, public art projects, should we discuss it in the policy at all and just mention whether they are either grandfathered in terms of some of the other requirements in the policy, or if they should be somehow brought into the policy? It's just a question you can think about, because we should also address some of those existing ones.
Yeah, I'll just make the general comment, because your comments are excellent, Counsel Bernetta. It's a brand-new policy, and my comment with brand-new policies is let's live with it for a year and keep track of how it works, and then review it at the end of a year and make any necessary changes. Would that be okay? And I've got Counsel Firth first, and then I'll go to Counsel Bien.
Thank you, worship. Can administration comment if this is going to be tied to our community improvement plan? I think this would be a great synergy from where I'm sitting, so...
You want to comment from administration?
Yeah, is this going to be in the community improvement plan?
Manager Burrows?
Thank you, and through the chair. Concept like these that do improve community well-being can be considered for implementation in the community improvement plan. As we develop the community improvement plan, we will be speaking to our consultants about what other municipalities do and seeing if a public art initiative or incentive can be implemented to the plan, and that will be brought back to council for approval at that time.
Yep. Thank both of you, and Counsel Bien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And just adding to your comment just a second ago, under heading 13, Policy Review, it said the public art policy will be viewed every four years by the public art committee, recommended changes be brought forward for approval. Should that be modified a bit to say it'll be reviewed in the first year and then four years after that? Should that be included in that one?
Yeah, that's a good point. Let's add to it that it will be reviewed after the first year and again every four years. And if council's okay with it, we'll just take all of those as modifications of the policy and won't formalize it with moving a second. Any other comments? Those were excellent comments, councilors. Thank you for your input. With that, I'll then call the question, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much, councilors. Thank you, Madam Curator. No one was opposed to that one. Okay, moving on to the Special Events Policy, 10.2. Recommendation that I'll put on the floor reads that council approve the updated Special Events Policy for the Town of Fort Frances as presented. Mover and seconder, please? Counsel Firth and Counsel Bernetta? Okay, councilors, questions, comments? Counsel McTaggart?
Thank you, worship, through you. I'm just wondering, in terms of the insurance qualifications for parades in the community, was there any consultation with the three that come to mind, or the Christmas parade, the Quans Christmas parade, the July 1st parade, and the Bass Tournament? But as I got thinking about it, there are a number of walks in town, are they included or qualify as a parade? Whether it's an indigenous walk, or the Terry Fox Walk Run, or the Alzheimer's Walk? And just clarification on how those groups may be affected.
Manager McLeod?
Thank you, through the chair. The walks aren't considered a requirement to be ensured, and there was consultation at the beginning of the Special Events Policy process with the user groups, or I guess the event organizers. So the insurance requirements recommended tonight are based on what other municipalities and event organizers are currently doing. So it's status quo.
Thank you, Manager McLeod. Follow-up, Counsel McTaggart?
I just want to make sure that we're not, what's the word I want? Making it a stumbling block for parades to happen. They're community events, they're fun times, and we want to make sure that the parades continue. Thank you.
Totally agree. CEO Michaels?
Thank you, worship, to Counsel McTaggart's question. We essentially reverted back to the original draft of making it cumbersome and difficult. So what is asked of the parade user groups are exactly already what they're doing. So there'll be no change in the logistics of what they're doing, no new addition of rules and requests that they have to trickle down to the people who are participating. If you recall, there'd be insurance from each participant. So essentially what we're doing is we took their feedback and we are leaving it the same way, which is the huge majority of Ontario goes that way. So to answer your question clearly, no changes in the logistics will be very happy to, from the user groups of the parades.
Thank you, CEO Michaels.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion or questions? Counsel Bien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out on heading eight, on page 12 of 16, I believe, it says annual review, I should probably say policy review. And once again, I might mention that it says we will review this policy at minimum every three years, but again, it should be a one-year first before we do that rotation, just to include that. And that's another thing, too, that we can do it for a year, see how it goes, and if there has to be changes made after a year, we can learn from it and go from there. But so I think it's good for the first year and see how it goes.
We'll make the slight modification, review at the end of the first year and then every three years. Thank you for that, Counsel Bien. Any further questions or comments? Okay, then calling the question, all in favor? That's carried, no one was opposed. Okay, moving on to 11, Planning and Development Division Reports. Put this resolution on the floor. That council approval of report AR-25-0948 agrees with the recommendation of administration to approve the final draft of the Town of Fort Frances zoning bylaw and attached schedules, and that these documents be adopted through bylaw at a subsequent council meeting. Can I get a mover and seconder, please? Counsel Bien? Counsel Morrison? Questions, councilors? Comment from CBO Burrows, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Halaikis, and through the chair. I just wanted to express our excitement in bringing this towards council. It's been a long process, and I really just wanted to thank my predecessor, Cody Benjel, Transportation Superintendent, for starting this project and carrying it through to the end. And I would also like to thank our consultants, WSP, specifically Jill McDonald, who led this project. They did a lot of legwork in putting these documents together, and we're just happy to finally bring it in front of council.
Thank you, and we thank you, CBO Burrows, for all your work on this. It's been a long time coming and an awful lot of work, and we're greatly appreciative. Calling the question, all in favor? That's carried, and no one was opposed. Okay, that brings us to Operations and Facilities Division Reports. There are none, so item 13 is bylaws, and we have one. Recommendation that's coming on the floor is that bylaw, 87-25, being a bylaw to adopt a youth council policy, be introduced and read and finally passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal, and become law forthwith. Mover and seconder, please? Counsel Firth? Counsel McTaggart? Counsel Mackey?
Thank you, worship. Looking at the motion, the bylaw itself, it's got it dated November 20th. I'm just wondering if it should be today's date.
Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, our deputy clerk did catch that and has already fixed it on the printed copy. Thank you.
Clerks are amazing. Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Mackey. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question, all in favor? That's carried, no one was opposed. Okay, item 14, Notice of Motion or Motion to Reconsider. There are none. So that brings us to item 15. Council is going to go into closed session, so I'll put a motion, a resolution on the floor. The council now meet in camera in order to address a matter pertaining to, one, disposal of the town's recycle depot and transfer station. This comes under 239-2C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And two, point bar litigation, pardon me, point park litigation settlement costs. This comes under E, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and under 239-F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A mover and seconder for this, please? Counsel Firth and Counsel Bernetta? So we are going into camera as soon as I call the question at 6:19. Calling the question, all in favor? That's carried, and no one was opposed. For those of you who are dropping in virtually, we'll move into closed session now, and at the end of closed session, we'll come back into open session and report. Okay, we're back in open session, and we have three resolutions coming out of the closed session. I'll put them... I'll put them on the floor. Dealing with item 15.2, recommendation reads, "The council approval of report AR-25-0951 will agree with the recommendation of administration to proceed with the disposal of the recycle transfer station and depot as outlined in the report, and the council delegate the authority to the Operations and Facilities Division manager to negotiate the terms of the sale as directed, and that a report be brought back to council at the terminations of the negotiation, updating council and authorizing the signing of the agreement of purchase and sale." Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Burnett, Councillor Mackey. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. No one was opposed. Thank you. Dealing with item 15.3, the recommendation reads, "The council approval of report AR-25-0960 titled Point Park Litigation Settlement Cost, and that administration proceed with option 3 as directed by council." Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Bean, Councillor McTaggart. Any comments? All in favor? It's carried, no one was opposed, and Councillor Morrison did declare a conflict on that and did not vote. Item 15.4 are the closed meeting minutes of November 10th, and the recommendation reads that council approve the closed meeting minutes of November 10th, 2025. Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Burnett, Councillor Mackey. Calling the question, all in favor? It's carried, no one was opposed. That brings us to item 17, our confirmatory bylaw, and the recommendation reads that bylaw 88-25 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the Town of Fort Francis be introduced, read, and finally passed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal, and become law forthwith. Mover and seconder, please. Councillor Bean, Councillor Morrison? Any discussion? All in favor? Carried, no one was opposed. And finally, they're having reached the hour of?
7:26.
7:26. This meeting of the council of the Town of Fort Francis be now closed. Councillor McTaggart and Councillor Mackey. All in favor? All in favor? That's carried, no one was opposed. Thank you, councillors, for your...
We had 7:27.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, John.
Enjoy your holiday.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]